All right, good evening and welcome. It is the November 18th, 2019, regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I will reconvene the meeting as we've met in executive session prior and call the meeting to 100 at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped and I would ask that everybody please stand for the recording meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will go forward with the roll call. Please, Sophia.
Sophia Yakobucci, student representative.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Ficero.
Sarah Trullian.
Gregory Thompson.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Antonella Rochella.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Thank you all. How are we dealing with minutes this evening?
We have them on here and we'll take them off.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, we have some minutes for approval this evening.
Make a motion to approve the November 4th, 2019 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Next.
Move to approve the November 4th executive session meeting minutes.
Made. Motion.
Seconded.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Committee and subcommittee communications, Sophia, please.
Okay, so actually last week I was able to go to, a few others were there on the board, but I was able to go to the second meeting with Klee and the diversity and equity kind of committee. So it was different from the first meeting. We kind of broke up in groups and we discussed some root causes of certain inequities that we might have seen in our school based off some statistics we had viewed in the first meeting. So we kind of discussed that and I thought it was great to kind of see the collaboration between parents, teachers, administration, students. So I thought it was great and yeah, just out of the first meeting.
How many participants roughly?
I...
Twenty-one.
Yeah, and the 20s.
Oh, great, great.
You had a student training as well, didn't you, earlier? Not that same way?
Oh, yeah, with, yeah.
With the Bridges program?
Prior, with the Bridges and NCCJ, yeah, we had that prior. So that's slightly different because where kind of the meetings was clear, more based on looking at actual kind of like statistics, what's going on in our school. The meetings with NCCJ, I found were kind of more looking towards taking kind of action steps within our school.
Sure.
Student-based. So that's kind of a lot of discussion with students, so it's slightly different, but I think they're both very productive meetings, so.
Great, thank you so much.
Phil, please say. Andy Churchill, executive director of the LPBC, who most of you know, has tendered his resignation. He will be taking a position with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and as this thing unfolds, I will keep everybody updated, but the plans are to have a new executive director in place by July 1st, 2020. Our next process will be, we let him out of his contract effective January 17th and the board's next process will be figuring out how we're going to handle the interim period from January 20th through June 30th of 2020. And as I said, as the details come clearer, I will let this committee know.
Okay, great, thank you. Rich, please.
Rich, to the two committee meetings, Sophia already referenced one with the Equity and Diversity Committee, and I think we'll be coming up with a very effective, comprehensive plan for the whole school system, addressing that issue. I also met with the Collaborative Committee, which we're discussing on 6.2 today.
Great, excellent. Thank you, Rich. Sarah.
I had the opportunity to meet with Lisa Dakin and Renee Lodi at Meadowbrook as part of our partnership with each of the individual schools. So I was thrilled to be able to meet with them and hear about some of the exciting things that are happening at Meadowbrook. And the day that I was able to come on site was actually one of their department head meetings as well. So then I was able to stay and hear directly from some of the lead teachers at each of the grade level and also both of their coaches, their reading and their math coach. So it was a really great first meeting and I look forward to that continued partnership.
Excellent. It's Noah.
I attended an ELEAF meeting and the ELEAF gala is scheduled for February 8th and it's the 25th anniversary.
Is there a theme deal?
Oh, please no.
No.
Come on.
And the endowment is over a million dollars.
Oh, they made it.
They made it. Yeah, that's exciting.
For the 25th anniversary.
Wow.
Wow.
So February 8th. And also grant requests for teachers is due December 1st.
Excellent. I'll send out a reminder, they have the applications, we're already starting to get a few in.
Oh, nice, great.
Very cool. Okay, and next we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, item 5.1.1, eighth grade MIAA waiver for wrestling.
Okay, I'm going to speak on behalf of Mr. McGee. He was unable to be with us tonight. So the waiver for eighth graders joining our wrestling team, we've actually had it in place the past two years. Our coaching staff, Mr. Basile, works very closely with not only the athletic director but also the principal and assistant principal at the middle school. And even with the waiver in place, 2017 and 2018, we had zero eighth graders join and last year, I believe, we started with two and ended with one. What the coach does before every match, especially when he has the eighth graders participating, is he makes sure that he discusses with the opposing coach who the person at that weight class might be. If it's an incredibly experienced wrestler, then the eighth grader will not participate against that wrestler. And so they go at it with incredible caution and looking to be safe throughout. We hope to have this year somewhere between 10 wrestlers. In the past, we've started with 10 to 12 wrestlers. Unfortunately, as you go through the season, you don't maintain. If you started with 12, you don't necessarily have 12 at the end of the season. And so that's where the waiver request comes in.
Okay, questions? Motion.
Make a motion to approve the MIA waiver for wrestling for eighth grade for the 2019-2020 school year.
Great, motion made.
Second.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you. Yeah, a high school gift donation from Ohio Pile Prints.
Yeah, so in your package you'll see that Dr. Plant again has requested the check be accepted, the donation from Ohio Pile. This is from royalties based on the sale of spirit wear, which is really very nice for the local retailers. I did want to make mention of some of them. They did give us a list here, so there's the Stop &amp; Shop, the Big Y, Walgreens, CVS, and the second Stop &amp; Shop on Cooley Street. So thank you very much for selling that.
Okay, what about CVS High School?
I said CVS.
It's on there. Did you say CVS?
I did. I did say CVS.
Do you just want to say it more times?
CVS, Walgreens, Big Y, Stop &amp; Shop. Thank you.
Let me get out of work. Sounds pretty good apparel, it seems like.
Yeah.
It's great. We'll entertain a motion, please. Go ahead, Rich. It's your favorite.
Make a motion to accept the gift donation from Ohio Pile Prints for East Long Middle High School.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero as well. Capital projects in prioritizing the five-year capital plan.
Okay, so this is a second look at a draft that we put together now two meetings ago in terms of prioritizing 11 projects. That's in the, I guess, memo portion, and then you have the spreadsheet looking at the next five years with all the projects.
So the maple shade roof replacement, $1.2 million. If that's not funded, are we okay for another year? Potentially do we sound comfortable with that? And I only ask in terms of prioritization.
Yeah, I think with any flat roof, you're always going to have challenges, but...
It's leaking though?
It's not leaking to the extent that we had seen, say, in Meadowbrook or the high school.
Right.
But if they have, you know, some of those more torrential downpours, they have leaks in certain places.
Any direction, message, guidance from town hall yet?
I know that the Department of Public Works has submitted their capital plan for the town. Given that we're the largest department, I think it probably is wise for us to submit as well, but no, I have not received any official guidance on capital discussions or budget development discussions.
And you've discussed the five-year plan and the prioritization list with the superintendent of the DPDW?
Yes.
No major concerns on his behalf in terms of...
No, I think, you know, he might bump the electrical switchgear to two, but, you know, those are your top three.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I thought last year you made a motion that there should be a statement somewhere here that this is based on the process of getting to high school. Because really, if we were getting to high school, wouldn't this be, wouldn't we be putting some of the high school things in? Did we say something?
Well, there's, you do a kind of a narrative as you say that.
I can put together a cover letter regarding that.
But I thought there was some addendum that showed the high school project saying we kept...
Oh, we had a second, we had a second sheet. So, yeah, actually, you're right, that's great.
So let's do that again.
So the projects...
The spreadsheet, the ones that are asterisk?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the ones that would be taken care of in a comprehensive project.
Right, but I think that...
Are all other non-asterisk items for FY 21 on 1 through 11?
The only one we don't have is the furniture. I don't believe we have that.
Well, we don't.
No.
I mean, that can be...
The high school art?
The art room and cafeteria tables, so it's, that's something that you could purchase now and move into a new building, as we've done with some of the other furniture purchases.
So should we put that as number 12?
I think, I think the dress is all high school related.
And then the asterisks, we can just list as listed, just so they're aware of the other things that we're not necessarily requesting, but if not for a project, then those would be top of the list.
So that would be, what, 31, 32, 33, and 37?
Right.
Correct.
And then all others are accounted for?
Can I remind everyone that the MSBA has the accelerated repair project for the, you know, roof and doors and windows? I just wanted to remind everyone because we were just talking about that maple shade roof.
Sure.
I didn't know if that was something, you know, I don't even know if...
To apply for?
Well, exactly, because you can only apply for roofs and doors and windows and boilers, I think, maybe also. So that's it.
I don't know if it qualifies because they've increased their, we'd have to check.
Okay.
It used to be 20 years and now it's definitely 25.
25, they opted.
We couldn't touch the building for 25 years.
No, no, roofs won't qualify unless they've been on, they've been on the building 25 years.
They used to, as Gordon was saying, it was 20 years.
Well, they got inundated a couple of years ago when we had all that snow. They didn't do any roofs and then they upped the criteria at 25.
Right.
And we got in the next year for Meadowbrook.
Right.
And Meadowbrook was 24.
And Meadowbrook was 24 when they took us.
I just thought I should remind you all about the program.
So we have that at number nine. Is that something we want to think about applying for then, or we need to find out the...
I would need to find out how old it is.
I mean, in the past, we never got down that far, so it's something we could revisit.
Well, as is, we're at 3.9 million plus the...
Plus the high school.
Plus number 12, which is another 166, so we're over four, four and change. Yeah, so the likeliness, unless there's some major bonding done, which we never, you know, as...
Right, but even...
If it is, and then we talk about it as we find out.
And they can even bring it, we can pull it off in our discussions with the council if it's something we think we might want to apply for, especially if we think they're not... Well, as, once we find out the age of the roof, then we can decide what to do.
And then after roof is replaced, we can't do anything with the building for how long?
If you get a roof replaced, or you can still do boiler, windows and so forth, but then the building should be used 25 years out, at least.
Forward.
Right.
Yeah.
And if you were to move away from that building, then they're going to ask for a percentage of their money back.
Well, but that would be okay, right? Strategically speaking, I guess, if we got, if we had to pay it back, we'd have to pay it anyway if we did it as an initial capital project and not go for the reimbursement. So it would still be worth going for the reimbursement. Is it based on a percentage of the 25 years?
Right.
That we have to pay back?
Yeah.
So it shows some value in going for it, even if we may not keep it 25 years.
The facility study originally looked at high school first and then going to elementary and figuring out what to do with sort of maple shade and mountain view. Do you do something at, you know, that point where you're bringing the two together in some type of new project?
I think, though, if it qualifies, we should consider applying, and if so, we should perhaps pull it off the capital list only because it drops the, that's 25% of our requests.
But of course, if we applied for that, do you remember the timing on that?
You have to do it before February break.
You have to, it happens pretty quick, like much quicker than the core projects.
Well, let's leave it on then. How about we leave it on and then when our discussion moving forward, discussion's moving forward, we potentially could make a different plan if appropriate. Okay, so we have 1 through 12 now. We've added number 12, which is...
High school furniture?
Correct, high school art tables and cafeteria tables in the amount of $166,487.21. I'm just going to run through these real quick, just so we're on the record. This is our East Long Middle Public School FY 2021 capital projects.
Pressure.
Prioritized projects for FY 2021, we've got to fix that title a little bit. Maple shade, number one, maple shade phase two steam piping replacement. We've done part of the project already. The remaining cost is estimated at $449,430. That's our number one priority. Number two, Mount View, replace portable modular trailer classrooms with permanent structures. That's two classrooms on Mount View?
Yes, two classrooms.
Two classrooms replaced. Those are the modulators at the very end. That's $1.3 million. Number three, East Long Middle High School electrical switchgear distribution panel replacement. We've decided that that's a necessity even with a comprehensive project going forward. That amount at number three would be $119,115. Number four would be Meadowbrook parking lot redesign in the amount of $186,000. Number five is Bertrand Park Middle School carpet replacement in library, computer rooms and chorus room. That's in the amount of $43,900. Number six is district-wide resurface the track. That's $157,983. Were we going to use the rental money for this or for the turf? What would we originally talk about?
We originally talked about using it for this.
For the track, so we should find a balance on that, and then would that lower our actual request?
It could, yeah. It would lower it.
About $41,000, I think.
$41,000.
Could we put all that towards it? Do we, can we wipe that out or do we need to...
If you wipe it out, you would need some balance because we do our maintenance for the turf out of that account.
So can we, what would be the number we'd be comfortable with applying directly to the track? 30,000?
41. Are we going to ask Mr. McGee?
I believe it's 41.
I would say 30,000 gives you $11,000 to maintenance.
So should we modify the amount for the resurface of the track to $127,983 and make a note that we would be using 30,000 from revolving rental account?
Sure.
I think that's what we always agreed upon, right?
I guess so.
So we could make a note right on the request.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So drop it to $127,000.
Are we, did we make a motion on this already? No, we haven't.
Not yet.
No, you had the list along.
Okay, so that would be a change on number six. Number seven, Mount View gym floor replacement, that would be in the amount of $65,000. Number eight, maple shade renovation of basketball and play area and basketball court and replacement of the backboards and hoops. That's in the amount of $65,000. Number nine, maple shade roof replacement, that's the flat roof on the main section of the school in the amount of $1.2 million. Number 10, Mountain View office renovation, that's in the amount of $256,000. Number 11, East Long Middle High School skylight replacement, we talked about this at the prior meeting, that's replacing of the domes and to be sealed, that's in the amount of $20,600. That's the minimum amount, $20,000 for a capital project, right?
Yep.
And then number 12 would be the high school art room tables and cafeteria tables in the amount of $166,487.21. They don't have a total, but...
But total's now going to be off a little bit because we would...
Reduce it by that.
You would add the $166,487.21 to the total and then minus like 30,000.
Shouldn't we move in the...
Plus $166,487.21.
So I have $4,063,420.21.
Okay.
Does that sound right? Pam, did you do that or no?
I'm sorry, I did not do it.
What'd you get?
I was trying to look at the account.
Oh, see, we got different numbers. We got to do that.
Okay, so you take the, take the total at the bottom?
3, 9, 2, 6...
2, 6, 9, 3, 3.
9, 3, 3.
Yep.
Minus the 30.
Minus the 30.
Minus 30,000.
Yep. And then add the 166...
166.
487.
487 point...
21 cents. 21.
4063.
487.
Point 21.
That's, yeah.
That's what you had before?
Yes.
Okay, $4,063,420.21. That's our grand total.
I contribute the 21 cents. Just round this off.
So we can have a motion to accept and send along to the town manager and town council based on the changes that we just discussed.
And the inclusion of the narrative.
Inclusion of the narrative and the five-year plan in the total amount that we discussed.
Greg, I just brought up the account. I just wanted to say, it's not at 41, it's at $38,600. So I just wanted to...
Is 8,000 enough to leave in it?
Probably like a little bit more than that.
I think the maintenance is a little over 5,000 each year.
It is, yeah, you're right.
And then any other things that you may want to do out there, such as this year, the drain around the track, there are areas that have started to be crushed and so they're replacing those.
Should be keeping 10 in there?
Keeping 10, so what was that number, Pam?
38, 68, 1.
38, 68, 1.
So you subtract in 28.
Add 2,000 to it. So just leave it at the 28 even?
Just add 2,000.
Yeah, and then add 2,000 to the total, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Add 2,000 to the total.
So then we had it at 127, it'd be 129, 983, and contributing 28.
28,000.
1,000 from the revolving account.
Thank you.
And that makes the number 2,000 higher than that.
Right.
So it'd be 4, 6, 5.
$4,065,421.21, that's our second capital. Who wants to do that one? It's all moved.
Yeah, it worked because it was, it's in the narrative, so it's all moved.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, further discussion.
So we're approving 1 through 12.
Correct.
With the caveat about the track.
The 28,000 from the revolving account.
And then we're approving in the narrative that Gordon, Mr. Smith explains about the MSBA process.
Correct, protect the projects that would be covered in a comprehensive project.
Clue number 37, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion has been made.
And seconded.
And seconded, then?
Can I just make one other comment that I'll have to you guys...
How, how do I make it?
No, because I just, I know the folks out there listening don't always know and understand the MSBA, so the core projects, so we're talking about the high school, we still want the high school. That's our plan, I mean, hopefully to be invited in. The accelerated repair projects are separate.
Right, smaller projects. Smaller projects. Roofs, windows, doors.
Boilers.
Boilers.
Boilers, yeah.
And although, once we get the age of the roof in maple shade.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification. So the motion has been made, it has been seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay, and that carries five to zero as well. All right, we have a draft of the 2020-2021 East Long Middle Public School calendar.
Okay, so these are similar drafts to what you saw during the last meeting. The change, there are two changes. One, we added with the help of the Collaborative Committee, the March 18th full-day professional development day, so both full-day professional development days are in there. One is on November 3rd and one is on March 18th. The second difference is the fact that draft two has, is it draft two or draft one? Sorry.
That's draft one that had, the other one is draft two. So you just said what draft one was, right?
No, both have the March day.
Oh, okay.
Both have the March day.
They're both the same, right? No, no, yeah, yeah, September, September 4th.
Yes, okay, draft number one has September 4th, keeps the tradition of the Friday before Labor Day as a day off.
And draft two...
Draft two does not have that.
Has school on, beginning on the 1st of September, which is Tuesday, and also having school on Friday the 4th. That's the second draft.
Yes.
Still having the 7th off for Labor Day on both.
Right.
Discussion.
Well, the Collaborative Committee was pretty strong and passionate, but keeping with draft number one as far as unanimous vote. And I would say that it's represented by all five buildings, the school committee with me, and Mr. Smith is a ex officio, so the vote included all the representatives plus the school committee.
Was there a discussion about reasons for why the Friday?
Yeah, there was quite, yeah, there was quite a few. I know what you wanted to kind of overwhelm me, like I wrote down about eight or nine different reasons. I don't know what you want to, I'm not, I, the biggest thing I heard, I shouldn't say big, there were a lot of different reasons. One reason for that Friday being off that I heard, and the key word that I heard was saturated. It came from, I think, the Meadowbrook representative that. By the end of that Thursday, that's, that a lot of students, and people seconded, it of that Thursday, um, that's, that a lot of students in, uh, it's people's second words, is saturated with the beginning of school, and that that Friday helped everybody kind of regroup, it gave people a chance to, uh, enjoy the long weekend, and, um, they felt that it adds a nice big picture, continue to be on three days the first week, four days the second week, and five days the third week. And that gives people a chance, especially the teachers, to kind of go over their students that they met for three days, because of a chance to kind of, uh, refresh in their minds what needs to be done in their rooms. It, there was a lot of positive thought about how that day works for everybody. That was one reason.
Yep.
But the teachers don't have to do anything that day.
No, they don't.
Right? It's not like a, a workday or a workday.
But I'm just speaking from my experience, as I told you, eighty-nine percent of my building was filled with teachers that were on that day.
Lot of teachers do come in. Um, and come in also if they're doing anything with, uh, special education in central office or things that they need to connect with here, either in payroll or just in central office itself will come in. Historically, I think, uh, two thousand six, two thousand seven was the first time that the East Lane Middle Public Schools started students before Labor Day. In previous years, what they had done is students started after Labor Day, however, there were in contracts, uh, in those previous years prior to two thousand six, where you had convocation and a professional development day that happened before Labor Day. So you had convocations on a Wednesday, you had then the professional development on a Thursday, and then that Friday still sat, um, as a day off, not technically, because it just was an unpaid day, um, in terms of the contract. But I think some of that is sort of built in what people remember, in terms of not working that Friday.
Right. There has been school on that Friday, one year.
One year there was school on that Friday.
In between.
Correct.
I mean, I think when you look at some of the district's goals going into this, um, last year and going into this year, and thinking about supporting the whole child, and thinking about students who would benefit from consistency, and now you're talking about three days of instruction, another extended weekend, coming back, um, and handling those transitions, especially when we think about our youngest kids, um, and our youngest students, but that continuity also speaks to our district goal around supporting the whole child. Um, and I just think it sends a message that we're back, we're back in school. There's really no strong reason why it's off, other than sometimes educators take advantage of it, depending upon their, their schedules, I'm assuming, which is great, but contractually they're not required to come in and do any of the things that some of them are, are doing. Um, it's not a holiday, it's just something that's kind of existed. So, I mean, for me, I, I think the kids should go to school. I think it's another day where we're not contending with weather, we're able to really start the school year off with two, four-day weeks, it's, it's not, um, educators have a five-day work week. Yeah, I think.
I think philosophically, I can see where you're coming from, Mr. Thompson, but I guess my feeling is, I don't know what you gained by putting that day in. I, I really, um, feel like, two thoughts. First thought is, is that, um, with, with the culture of the town has been that Friday's been an off day, I wonder how well the transition would be as far as attendance. Um, is, is that, is, is, to me, that is not a prime learning day, the Friday before a long day, a long weekend, after starting school that week. I think we could find a better day for that day to be put. Philosophically, I like your thought about it, but I would say that there's better ways to gain a day, uh, maybe contractually, we put that, that second PD day in there. So I don't think you gain that much instruction that day, Sarah, right? That's, I, that's the way I feel.
But I think what you, what you risk is pushing out routines and rituals into the following week. Um, so I do think in a way you, we potentially are allowing for that to continue further into the academic year. So in one way or another, we're chipping away at time that could be spent on instruction. Um, and then I think Unit A isn't up until next academic year?
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
So in order to gain that professional development day, we'd be looking at potentially another negotiation cycle, which would mean, what, twenty, twenty-two?
Yeah.
That academic year?
Twenty-three, oh.
So the start would be twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, before that could, right?
Uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
You could build it in, then you don't have to negotiate it.
Twenty-one.
Kind of to your point.
Yeah.
I think to that extent, if we build it in now, it doesn't have to be negotiated in as a day of work. Sophia, you have something to say?
Well, I can only really speak for the high school, 'cause I don't really know how it goes in the other schools, but personally, I feel like having that Friday off, like, speaking from a student, um, is, it's like, so we go to school for those three days, and in the high school, it's very structured towards kind of those three days being, um, kind of getting to know your teachers, especially for the freshmen, I think, getting back with all your friends, which going back to school from the summer is kind of like a big transition for anyone, I feel like. And then, so, I, for me, I kind of see adding that Friday back as just kind of extending that period, not really getting into academics, at least for the high school, because while in some classes you do, especially if you're in AP courses, you kind of, you don't have that much time, but you gotta have to get going. Um, but I think for a lot of the other courses, that first week is kind of taken as a, you know, um, what's the expectations of the class, um, especially in the past few years, kind of getting to know you, and especially that third day. Um, and then kind of following that, it's nice to have the break, and then the next week, you're like, ready to go, like, this is school now, or at least that's, um, from my personal experience, going into that next week, I'm kind of like, okay, now I have all my stuff in my backpack, now I have everything ready to go, and now I'm kind of ready to jump in academically. I kind of feel like adding that Friday back as a day of school would only extend, at least for the high school, the period of kind of introduction. I don't think that the day would, I, I think that the, the following week is what's usually used as kind of jumping headfirst academically. So I'm kind of seeing that, adding that Friday back as just an extension of kind of the, um, kind of getting comfortable with your teacher that we've been using those first three days for.
So I think to that point, Sophia, thank you for that, um, I think the third option would be to move the first day of school to the Wednesday, which would kind of be a hybrid of the two, to have the three days and not overextend the introductory part of the year, but still some consistency in terms of this is a day of school, we're going to the school. And we all start a day later, which may be not so bad, right? Maybe, maybe, maybe not. Pam, you had some information in terms of the, uh, other districts?
Right, uh, so we did ask for all of the LPVEC districts' calendars. I looked at them, uh, briefly before our meeting, what I can tell you, do you want me to tell you each district?
Please, yeah.
So Agwam started school on September fifth, Hampton Wilbraham started school on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, and does have school on Friday, the thirtieth. Long Meadow started school on, on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, and has, had school on Friday, August thirtieth. For FY twenty-one, they have their calendar out, and they're starting school, uh, I wrote eight-thirty-one, Monday, has school all week. Did I get that right, Gordon?
That's Monday, yes.
Okay, 'cause I, I wrote that Long Meadow for FY twenty-one is starting on August thirty-first.
And they have how many days that week?
Uh, good question, I'm so sorry, I don't have...
That's all right.
Ah, so that's this one here.
Well, they have to start earlier than us, because they have additional days off that we do not. And Agwam is contractual to start after Labor Day.
Oh.
Okay, and Ludlow starts school, started school on, uh, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, and had school on Friday, August thirtieth.
Okay.
Southwick started on, on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, and had school on Friday, August thirtieth. West Springfield started school Thursday, August twenty-ninth, and had school on Friday, August thirtieth.
So the Long Meadow, Pam, just, you said was out for next year, are they going five days?
It is, it's the only calendar that was out for next year.
Well, that's because of the days off they get in October, too. No, I just wanna know if they were going that Friday as well?
They are.
They're starting Monday, going Friday?
Yeah, so August thirty-first, they're starting, and they go that Friday. I, I wrote, um, has school all week.
So a couple of interesting points, though, uh, based on this year, um, which is along the lines of what I think you just mentioned, Mr. Thompson, I'll, at least three of the districts started either Wednesday or Thursday.
Correct.
So that they're weeks in that first week before Labor Day, even if they went on Friday, were three or two.
Sure, yeah.
Right.
So how does that work then, contractually? So say we...
We're not obligated contractually.
No, but to your point, if we were to have them, if school, if students were to go back Wednesday, Thursday, Friday...
We would move convocation, probably.
To Tuesday?
Yeah.
Because none of us negotiate, that's, that part's not negotiated.
Right.
The only one, the only, the only district in the LPVEC that is contractually found to start after Labor Day is Agwam.
The other thing you could do is you keep convocation on that Monday, and Tuesday's not a contractual day.
So teachers still could go in.
Correct. And then...
I think they'd be happier coming Tuesday. I just think.
Of course.
From a teacher, yeah.
You do nothing on Monday, you do Tuesday as convocation.
Yes, I, I mean, without being too drastic, I don't mind talking about it, focusing just things that, that's...
To give you, this was an article, I guess, or a letter that was sent to the reminder either in two thousand eight, as they were trying to figure out the two thousand nine year. Uh, so I'm assuming it was, it was, uh, Unit A, if you want to take one of those, it's pass tomorrow. We did not have a copy at the collaborative meeting, but, uh, representatives were looking for it after the meeting, and wanted to make sure people had it.
This doesn't address the Friday issue, this is just...
Nah, it's just how, how we get to where we were.
Right.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, other than past practice, I, I just don't see the reason to go to school.
So what about the Wednesday, then? How are folks thinking about the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? That might even be a better scenario for a lot of families, I wonder.
I'm just concerned about, you know, we've done this for a number of years, and the families that still believe in that last, summer blast as Labor Day weekend will blow Friday off, no matter what's going on. I think we have to consider that, too, for that long weekend, because that's the, the compromise way back when, when this first started, was to get it to move to before Labor Day was, we'll give you that Friday off. I understand everybody, what everybody's saying.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know.
I understand what everybody's saying, I'm just saying, I was on the committee at the time.
I think folks might even be, I don't know, I don't know this, I'm just saying, with the Wednesday start, it's a day later to start.
Right.
It might make a lot of people happy all around.
Well, yes and no, depending on what your vacation plans are. And it, it is what it is. I mean, if they're either gonna be here or they're not gonna be here.
Yes.
I just think we shouldn't be making decisions as to setting the tone for the academic year, based on families potentially taking a vacation.
No, I understand.
No, no, and I, I'm just saying, like, I think there's lots of circumstances where we could continue to hash this out, but I think the calendar does set the tone for the academic year, I think it sets the tone in terms of what we're prioritizing and what we're seeking, um, to achieve as a district, and thinking about the SMART goal presentation last week, there is a, there's a lot that this district is, is trying to take on, and it's ambitious, and being able to support buildings with a calendar that reflects that, whether it's via professional development or via how, how and when the academic year launches, um, I just think it's a step forward for this committee to kind of come out and say, "The school year started, and, and how do we help set that tone?" Um, and while I, I get it, it's just, that's kind of where I am on it.
If we were to add a PD day contractually, is there some benefit to that Friday as a professional development day? Is that where we would necessarily put one, maybe? Or not necessarily?
I mean...
I'd put it in the beginning.
Before any days?
Yeah.
Do it before convocation.
So maybe, again, moving to Wednesday, so that potentially we could do that on Tuesday, and then have a...
But again, that wouldn't hit until after the next...
Yes, yeah, I agree with that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, lining it up, in terms of precedent setting, there, we'd have to change precedent...
Slowly.
By nature, yeah. What do you think, Anthony, where are you at?
I think they should be going to school, too.
Four days, three days?
Yes.
Which, Friday definitely.
You're saying that teachers are using those days to get to know their students. They don't get to know their students in three days. There's nothing wrong with having another day there, and routines and procedures are extremely important to be doing from the beginning of the year, and that, that's another day that they could be practicing those routines and procedures that set the tone for, for the rest of the year.
I don't want to talk in a dodelly, but I mean, this calendar has worked. I mean, for, for us as a school committee, to take something which is a non-issue and has worked, and make it an issue, I, I don't see the reasoning behind that. This calendar works. I don't s-, and, uh, and I, and I'll add one more piece to this. It's gonna be difficult, we'll go back to the collaborative committee, if we vote this calendar down, pick a different calendar, because, quote, "It's collaborative, you've got representatives from everybody," and it's a, and it's one of those, the, the flow comes to us, and yes, it's our final decision, but if we're gonna support collaboration throughout the school system, and then make a heavy-handed decision to not have the calendar that the collaborative committee, who represents all five buildings, wants and recommends, and it's worked the past fourteen years...
Was there any discussion as to why, of the merits of having the kids go to school? Was there any...
Oh, there was. Uh, uh, the, the discussion was, discussion was why it works, and it, I, I think, and that's where the passion comes, and I think it's worked so well that they are...
I was asking the opposite. Was there any, was there any conversation as to why going to school an additional day might be a benefit?
Can't think of anything that, that, that came up, basically, it was why it worked, and it wasn't what, what, why it didn't work, no. There was no, there was no discussion about adding that day, it was pretty much, let's look at both calendars, what calendars do you like, and then discussion, fo- focus on calendar number one and draft one. I mean, it's, it's our decision, I mean, I'm, I'm showing you both...
Well, so, but I think, uh, to that point, and I agree with you, Rich, on, in terms of asking for input and then taking the input when, when it's provided, is, is the three-day Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, a kind of a compromise to that point, because it addresses some of the issue, and I know it's, it's, it's happened in the past, the Friday, but it's kind of moderately arbitrary.
I mean, I'm, and I think we're having a very engaging, open discussion, um, I mean, depending on the vote, it's not gonna go away, but by, by, by that, I mean, is, I think if we, we've opened a discussion on the calendar, and we've already brainstormed other ideas, adding professional development day, starting this, this week later. So, I mean, I think that discussion sits still takes place, no matter what the vote is. How can we make the calendar even better? Because we have two choices in front of us, I don't know if that restricts us, or is there a third choice? I'm not sure.
I mean, we could...
Well, I think the third choice was to, to, you know, back, to start on Wednesday. I think that was the third choice.
And go Thursday, Friday, still in three days.
And you're, you're just playing with the beginning of the week on, uh, convocation and professional development.
You're basically opening up that Monday.
Right, for whatever.
As the day off.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the real school Monday, ready for Monday.
You're backing up, the teachers would still, if they, if they had intentions of working the five days, they would still have the opportunity, just the, the student day off is ahead, instead of the end of the week.
At the end of the week.
I think that's a compromise that we could say to the collaborative committee, which one we wanted to compromise on what? I don't know.
I, I guess, you know, being forthcoming, I, I feel like the calendar works, I've heard how it works, I've been, I, I've experienced a calendar working. I, I think it's innovative, um, I know other systems don't have that Friday, but I think for us, it's worked for us for fourteen years, um, and I, and I, and I support calendar number one, I'm just being very forthcoming.
Um, I mean, we can come back to it with that other option. The other thing we, we could do, I'm noticing in the letter that you gave us a little while ago, Gordon, there was a parent survey before, you could always survey families, because, I mean, we're talking about one group of stakeholders, which are clearly an important one, which are the educators that service the students day in and day out, but there's another group of stakeholders who we haven't necessarily heard from, which are families, and where they are regarding the start of the academic year. I just think when you, when you look at that, and you're talking about a calendar, yes, I agree that for the past fourteen years, but I also think family dynamics change over time as well, um, and families may be looking for, for kids to have a full academic week as well. So maybe we could also try to layer that in, and this is only the beginning of this conversation, we haven't, this doesn't include half-days either, right?
Yeah, no, the half-days, generally, we, um, put in after.
When are we looking to finalize?
How many? Yeah, how many half-days are there?
There are a lot of half-days.
There's a lot of half-days.
You have parent conferences, uh, and some of the half-days, and then you have professional development on some of the other half-days, which has always been a discussion at the collaborative, uh, committee, you know, how much is too much. One of the things that we've tried to do is, that week that the, um, high school is in exams, we try to have a half-day there for the system, so that high school has their exams, uh, we can do parent conferences at the younger schools, it's actually, then the middle school actually picks up one extra PD day, because they're doing PD as opposed to, um, conferences.
When, when, when do we typically finalize the, at least the first day?
Generally, we try to have it finalized in December if possible.
Okay.
But we have, in past years, gone to January.
Would we have time to survey parents on three options?
Yeah, I mean, we could try to set up, uh, depending on how many questions, you could do two different surveys, you can do a blackboard connect survey, which is quick-hitting, You can do a Blackboard Connect survey, which is quick hitting, and if you don't answer, you're not part of the survey. Or you could do something online through, say, Survey Monkey, and we would advertise it and give the link and say it's open until X, depending on what questions you want to ask.
Well, how many questions would we ask? Would the subject be solely the calendar? And if so, then I would imagine the question is, which do you prefer? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Maybe those are the three options.
Yeah.
Quick hitting.
So three questions.
Yeah, quick hitting.
Well, one question, which is three choices.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Okay, sorry.
Or even rate one, two, and three. I don't know.
Rank them.
Rank them.
Whatever. However you decide to do it.
Is there value in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it allows another stakeholder to have...
I mean, you can, you have time for really anything in terms of how long you want to send that survey out and keep it live. So if you want to do it for, say, not the December 2nd meeting, but you, because you're going to have Thanksgiving in there.
Yeah.
But do it for the second meeting in December, it gives you time to keep it open for a couple of weeks.
Do we have a second meeting in December?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second, and 14 days later.
Dance Christmas.
Yeah, sounds good.
We are...
No, it'll be, no, the 16th is one meeting.
16?
The 16th, I'm in November.
December 16th.
Oh, then the 30th.
The 2nd is 16th.
No, no, we do the 2nd, December 2nd. So you wouldn't want to do it, try to get it crunched in there before the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
But if you, if we got something out, basically with those questions or that one question, we could get it out to the public and have it open for three weeks.
Okay. Are folks comfortable with that? All right, when does collaborative meet again in the next three weeks?
So I was just looking up when you asked that question. I think it's the 11th.
So before 16?
Yeah.
So, Rich, could you bring this back and say we've had lengthy discussion? These are now the three options we're looking at.
From two to three.
Sure. Okay. And then get their input, and then we're asking for input from parents as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I'll try to put together a survey for the next agenda-setting meeting so that the two of you can see it, if that's a go. We'll send it out.
Well, I would get it out as quick as you can. I think the three options...
I mean, I think our agenda-setting meeting is going to be next week anyway.
All right, because, you know, it's not complicated.
Right.
There's three options.
Yep.
Rank them.
Okay.
I thought it was three questions, so. It became complicated for me. I'll need a visual.
Should the survey also go to staff? So we're canvassing all constituents.
I think it should.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can send out the link via Blackboard Connect where I can send it to families and staff and just say, you know, here are three opening weeks that we're looking at. We'd love to get your thoughts on this.
And I think, I think some of the worrying that Mr. Trulli should be folded in, that we're looking at the best possible staff for our students, what the best education, et cetera, et cetera.
Minimal amount of transitions for kids.
Here are the three counts we're looking at in regards to that.
Okay, good.
That works.
Good discussion. Thank you. So we'll table that then for the 16th.
Do a motion for me to put together the survey? And the two of you finalize it, which is, that's the only way I'll be able to get it out before.
Yeah, just do it.
I don't think, I don't think there's a need to vote on that.
Just do it, yeah.
Was there questions also on the half-days? Like, I'm wondering if you, did you already do a survey on that?
No, we didn't.
I think you, you want to be careful about the half-days in terms of whether you do that for parent conferences or not because that's negotiated as well. So if it came back that we would like something other than parent conferences on a half-day, we don't have that option.
We don't have that in the package. But that could be something that we offer up to families, maybe ahead of those negotiations next year.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
To do the, but I think we should, get that information.
But separately, not included with this.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think we need to take that on at some point.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll bring that back on the 16th of December, is the plan.
So I'll build a survey this week.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, with that, we are at our conclusion. Mr. Mackey, thank you so much. Sophia, thank you for being here for your input. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion made.
Second.
And seconded discussion.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, yes.
That's right. Walls in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. That carries five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.